Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you're not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Update. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Commissioner Corbin, and Commissioner Scootley. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Russell and Commissioner Fritsch. Commissioner Foster will be joining us shortly. And Commissioner Alves is absent. So with five planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
My name is Frank Corbin. I'd like to call the order of Planning Commission Meeting of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Laurie. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please signify online by using the thumbs up button. And in the room, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 I'm working on my reaction.
Okay, the motion passes with the five yes votes.
Okay, thank you. Prior to night, the commission received the meeting notes from the January twenty-three, twenty twenty-four meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? All right, seeing no indications as such, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes.
Make a motion to adopt as written.
Thank you, Laurie. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting notes for the last meeting. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and online with the thumbs up, or aye if it's easier for you.
I think I saw Bob's thumbs up. So the motion passes with five yes votes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is public comment. Megan, has anyone signed up for public comment? And are there any hands raised in Zoom?
There are no members of the public on Zoom, and we have not had anyone in the room sign up to give public comment today.
Okay, one last chance for anybody in the room if you'd like to give public comment. All right. Okay, tonight's agenda item is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Update. I will now turn it over to staff. Mindy?
Thank you very much, Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner. And yep, tonight we are going to be talking about the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. So as you guys are aware, the Comp Plan Periodic Update is going to be your topic, for the most part, for the next year and a little bit more. And most of the time, we're going to be sending you reports and giving you presentations, but there's not going to be action for you to take. So tonight, there's no action for you to take. That will happen a lot because we just need to keep everybody up to date on all the work as it progresses and give you an opportunity to react to that, to give us feedback to those things. So there's going to be a lot of that for the next year. Also, we are going to also be updating the Board of County Commissioners all along the way, too, same as we're doing with you guys, because there's just so much work to be done. It'll be overwhelming if we wait to the end. Any feedback that they give us, we'll give right back to you guys. So you'll get to hear if they have anything to say about anything that we present to them. Okay. So tonight's agenda, I'm going to go over the big schedule, big, big schedule, and give you an indication of where your decision points will lie. And then we're going to talk, we're going to kind of back up and we're going to do a little bit of reminders about what your priorities were when you had your joint session with the Board of County Commissioners. We're going to talk about the four community meetings that have been held so far and the communities' priorities, and then we'll close with next steps. And of course, I'll pause along the way, but if you have a question, just raise your hand, interrupt me, and we'll take the questions as they come. Okay, so all of you have seen this beautiful diagram of the work that you do, everything underneath the Planning Commission's purview. So the beginning of the Comprehensive Plan work, the the big part at the beginning is the Comprehensive Plan itself. This is the policy document, so goals and policies. Those policies that we set and amend during the Comprehensive Plan portion of this periodic update will then need to be implemented through the Development Regulations, which is the mustard yellow, and there will also likely be some changes to countywide planning policies in urban growth areas as well. But those are coming up, right? So right now, we're going to be focused on goals and policies, the big umbrella things that everything else lives underneath of. A reminder that a lot of what we're doing, a lot of what we're doing is mandated, right? So the state changed a bunch of laws and we have to do our periodic update to deal with those. We are going to, we're going to be talking about other priorities, too, as we go through tonight. On the Comp Plan webpage, there are two staff reports that we shared with you back in September, and those will just stay on the webpage. Those are what are the mandatory updates, right? So if you want to look back at what the mandatory updates are, notwithstanding what might change during this legislative session, you can take a look at those September staff reports and see those. And then, of course, we have to update things based on local condition and community priorities, which is what we're mostly going to be talking about tonight. So this is the big, big schedule. The light blue is staff working. It's public engagement activities, and it's those updates to the Planning Commission. The dark blue is when we expect to do kind of the formal workshops on drafts. Right? So all these meetings with you are obviously workshops, but the blue is when we'll, when we hope to have like a draft of something that you're going to be reviewing. The green is anticipated public hearings with Planning Commission. And the burnt orange is anticipated public hearings with the Board of County Commissioners. We must be done by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we don't have the ability to move things around very much. This is an intensely tight schedule. So that's why we're updating you guys along the way. We got to keep everybody up to speed on everything we're doing so that those hearings don't become too overwhelming when we get to them. So let's quickly just walk through. So the first thing you're going to see, maybe at the end of the month, maybe it'll get futzed into March, is the Public Engagement Plan. So that'll be a draft plan. We'll want to get your guys' thoughts on that. Public Engagement Plan is really a living document, right? Because we do public engagement the whole time. So it's something that builds and adjusts and changes, but we'll get you the first draft of that. In May, we're going to have land capacity analysis and housing needs assessment. So these are super, super technical documents that we're going to dive into. Those both get wrapped into the Draft Comprehensive Plan, which you'll get in June, along with a draft of the Capital Facilities Plan. Then you're going to get a draft of the Critical Areas Ordinance in August. The Packwood Subarea Plan Phase Two, the On Alaska Subarea Plan, and the Industrial Lands Update, which we'll talk about later, will be November, December, January. Also, right in there, you get the final Comp Plan and the Final Capital Facilities Plan. We're going to be really, really busy in those months. Holy cow, it's busy. And then we get everything wrapped up into the final Development Regulation Updates, which would be spring twenty twenty-five. So that is the monumentally huge big picture. Does anybody have questions about that?
This is Bob. I do.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thanks, Frank. My first one is where are the red blocks that need to go on the Packwood, or do they need to go on the Packwood On Alaska Industrial Land Update?
Absolutely. So the red blocks for those actually get wrapped into the Comprehensive Plan, the final, which is up for three or four lines from those. And then the Development Regulation Changes get wrapped into that last line there. So you guys will hold hearings on them as separate entities so that you can review them individually, but they will end up just getting wrapped into either the Comprehensive Plan or the Development Regul-, well, both, Comprehensive Plan and the Development Regulations.
Let me then ask it a different way, Mindy, because, thank you, it's there, it's complicated. Mine is a visual question, but yours was a more logical answer. My concern is when I see things like that bottom Development Regulations, and there's a blue Planning Commission, I get talked to once, and then there's a green hearing, and then there's an adoption. I would have thought there would have been a blue block back here around October. And it sounds like you've got that figured out. I guess I just want to make sure we we get hit once about four months before we get hit in to be making a decision. That's what I like. My brain likes it that way.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I totally understand. The Development Regulations, I think, will probably feed to you guys in chunks. So there'll be Development Regulations associated with Packwood, Development Regulations associated with On Alaska, Development Regulations associated with the industrial land stuff. Again, we'll talk about that in a minute. There'll be the Development Regulations associated with we have to change it because it's state law things we've got to change. I've got a long list of other stuff that we just need to clean up and we want to change in the code. So these will all be bite-sized things that come to you in the light blues. So that, so that when we get to those points of like, here's the draft Development Regulations, the thing I should be doing at that point is only highlighting what is different than the last time you saw it.
Agreed. And it's a lot easier, as we've talked about recently with some of the other things we've chatted about, to have engagement that we disagree on, but it can't come at like a crisis time when you're asking me a decision at the same time. And you're really good at that. You never have done that. Thank you.
Yep, we'll try to avoid that as much as we can here. Other questions and big picture?
Gretchen, do you have anything since I can't see you on the screen?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Frank.
Okay, thank you. I have an international trip scheduled for the end of May and the first part of June, so it is a possibility if I can't be in a place where I can get access to the internet that I may have to miss one or both of those meetings.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up. Much appreciated. It just means we're going to give you some really fabulous reading for your flights to different places. Yeah, it'll be really exciting reading. Should put you right to sleep.
I am, I am going to try my very best. I'll zoom in from the Philippines, so.
Please don't do it with some gorgeous, beachy, beautiful thing behind you and make us so jealous.
You know I would. Do you know what? It's, yeah, so it'll be nice here, too.
I appreciate that.
Can we read the Comp Plan, current Comp Plan online?
Yes, if you go to the Community Development webpage, it's under Adopted Plans. And it's in sections because it's big, right? So if you want us to just print you everything and you want a hard copy of it, let me and Megan know and we can do that, or you can read it by section by section online.
Because you're planning on putting in sections and taking out sections, and it'd be kind of handy to know what the whole thing looks like.
Yeah, and when you see drafts of stuff, what you're going to see is a lot of our approach to all of this is underline strike through. So what you're going to see is a lot of, here's the transportation section. Everything that's changing is shown in underline strike through, and we'll walk through it. So we won't just give you the things that are new or the things that are different. You'll always see it in the context of of where it lives in the plan. And as, I mean, I'm sure as you know, this is not a rewrite. This is surgical. We don't have the capacity to rewrite the plan, so it's surgical.
And the Shoreline Master Plan that we did a couple of years ago, that's, that's a completely separate document, or is it part of this that's not changing?
It is completely separate, and the only thing that, the only way that it might change is when we do our best available science update as part of the Critical Areas Ordinance. There's a possibility, although I think it's low because we really just updated the Shoreline Master Plan, but there's that chance that something comes up that then needs us to tweak back, but I think it's unlikely. Yeah. Okay. Let's move on. So the next thing we're going to talk about is the Joint Board of County Commissioners Planning Commission Priorities. So, okay, but wait, before I do that, hold on, we're going to back up. So before we do that, I want to remind everybody that we do have all these massive state mandates that we have to deal with. So we do have a report, a staff presentation. It's on the Community Development webpage under Comprehensive Plan, Periodic Update. So I'm not going to go deep into it. If you want to go back and review those, if you want to sit down with me to talk about that later, we can, but I just want to pop through them really quick. Because these are the things that we got to do, and I've just categorized them underneath the big four. So population, we set population allocations in May. We are required to accommodate population growth. That means we have to do a land capacity analysis. We likely will be changing zoning designations as needed. It also means that the cities are reviewing their UGAs because they have to accommodate the population growth, and we will be making decisions on those, right? So UGAs are going to be coming back to you with those, with those changes. There's an entirely new approach to housing. As we've talked about, housing is brand new. It's a huge new approach to it. We will be doing a housing needs assessment to help understand what we need to do to accommodate the new stuff. That's likely, again, going to result in changes to zoning designations and/or development regulations so that we're accommodating housing at all economic levels. We have to add a new climate resiliency element. This is brand new. It requires a lot of upfront work, a lot of discussion with the public on this. Whatever we come up with then in those goals and policies, we're going to have to look at then, do we change development regulations? We have to update, as we just said, our best available science. So that's part of this, is an update to best available science for the Critical Areas Ordinance. Again, that could result in changes to development regulations. All of it, I'm going to keep saying it, all of it by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It's a lot of work. So this is a lot of work coming. It's actually, I would say, probably too much, too much for us, too much for you. We're going to do the best we can. Okay. So let's talk about the Joint Planning Session. So back in September, we held that Joint Planning Commission Board of County Commissioners Work Session, and we brainstormed top priorities for periodic update. So these are in order of the conversations, so the ones that had the most conversation and, and the most comments on. Thankfully, many of them fall underneath of mandatory updates anyway. So everything that's got a double star is something that we will be addressing underneath of our mandatory updates. So that's wonderful. Just really quickly, so we got to do UGAs. Yes, we got to plan for and utilize UGAs. We have to address affordable housing. We need to protect and support farm and forestry lands. There's a Critical Areas Ordinance that we need to do. And then I want to talk really quickly at the top, the top priority. The top priority that we discussed in that joint session was actually industrial lands. So we talked about industrial lands needs. We talked about energy in there. And so this has become the Industrial Lands Update. This is a specific standalone task. It is specific to the IPAT Trans Alta properties that are up north here. We're going to be looking at updating the zoning designation and development regulations to make sure that those can redevelop as industrial. It will not be specific to any end user. So I just want to assure you guys that the conversation is not who owns the land and what kind of facility is going to go out there. It's making sure that all the regulations are in place so that it can redevelop as industrial as it comes out of mining, right? So as we reclaim the mining and it goes to industrial, we want that to be a smooth transition. So that's a standalone project, or it's not really a project, a task that we've identified that we're working on. And then we already talked about the other ones in here. So let's go to the next slide there. I just, sorry, I did something weird to my screen and it confused me. I don't know what I just did to my screen. Go away. There we go. Confused me. So, oh, I'm sorry, Megan, would you, I'm sorry, would you go back to the yellow one? I apologize. Got all confused. Okay, so the, the stars are things that are already going to be addressed in the mandatory update, the state stuff. The two highlighted ones are priorities for specific projects. We'll jump to the next slide. So those specific projects are the Packwood Subarea Plan and the On Alaska. That's the lammards. So you guys had identified wanting to make sure that we're utilizing and redeveloping our lammards. We're focusing on Packwood and On Alaska because those both have urban services or urban services are coming. So there's a lot of opportunity in those two spaces. And we just talked about the Industrial Lands Update for the IPAT Trans Alta Property. So this hits the Industrial Lands Priority. Okay, so here's your combined high-level scope of work. This is super high level. There's a lot underneath of each of these, but mandatory, population, housing, climate, critical areas. And then we've got the Packwood Subarea Plan, the On Alaska Subarea Plan, and the Industrial Lands Update. So that's high-level what our scope of work is. Before I talk about community priorities, this is the scope of work based on your and Board of County Commissioner and state mandate. So what do you guys think? What do you, have any comments, questions?
So unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at that meeting, and I really regret that, but the subject of climate resiliency came up. Was it because there was some advance notice of potential legislation coming to the legislature that was recently passed to?
It was already passed when we had this.
Oh, it was already passed. Okay, gotcha. Okay, okay. Okay, now, is this, well, I can read the legislation myself. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, I can summarize it really quick. We're adopting our Hazard Mitigation Plan. That accounts for ninety percent of this element, but we do need to write goals and policies that touch on the eleven topics that are listed underneath of the RCW now. So we do need to devise those policy-level things, and then we need to decide if those need any implementation that we don't already have. So that's what it is.
So is this going to add onerous burdens and regulations to developers and, you know, homeowners who, who wish to make changes to their property?
I highly doubt it because I believe that we will almost entirely in this county be focused on hazard management.
Okay, and when you say hazard management, what specifically are you referring to?
Flood, fire, yeah, the things that we already address, right? So we have flood plain management. I'm not sure that this will result in any development regulation changes because we already do a lot to address hazard management. It's a key priority and has been for us for years.
Okay.
So I, because I believe our Hazard Management Plan addresses most of what we need to address, I don't know that we will have very much, but we'll wait to see. There may be something that comes out of our discussions with the communities that meet that leads us to want to change something. We'll see.
Okay.
Yep.
I see Gretchen is unmuted as well as Bob. So Gretchen, would you like to go first?
I was just wondering if the short-term rental was lumped under housing or the subarea plan or both, or?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Yes, it is underneath of, for sure, Packwood Subarea Plan. As you know, we just adopted a policy that will need to be implemented for the Packwood area. You'll see when we get to community priorities that it also came up. So I do think we'll need to have a conversation about it as it relates to housing.
Okay, Bob?
Hey there. I don't even know if my photo thing, does it work? Do you see me sitting here in my hotel room?
We do.
We can see from your nose down.
Oh, well, then what I'm going to do is turn that off and just use my voice anyway.
Oh, you're fine.
But, hey, Mindy, I, this is high-level. My question, my question. High-level scope of work. The slide right before this had a list. And now I'm seeing this list. They're very similar. What am I missing here? Go back one more, one more slide. There you go.
You're not missing anything. I've just combined this high-level list with the mandatory updates and the three projects. So your guys' UGAs, affordable housing, protected farm and forest land, critical areas, those fall into the state mandatory requirements.
Yep.
And then the yellow ones become those three projects. So Megan, if you skip down two more, so population, housing, climate, critical areas. Those priorities that you guys had listed with the double stars all get captured in these conversations. And then the yellow highlighted ones get captured in the Packwood On Alaska and Industrial Lands.
Okay, so, so back up three. Let me start commenting on the first slide. This one. I liked what I saw here. I really liked the yellow because on the slide before I saw the highlighted, but I thought, wow, that lammard thing, we need to do that lammard thing. And I know a bunch of stuff from other work that that other one's top and critical up there on the top and must be done, must be done right away. So then when you went to the next slide, which one is that? Next slide? Yeah, okay. Where's the one with three? Was that after this or between it? There we go. I thought, okay, I know where she's drilling in. And then, okay, so the final slide. And this is where you're saying we're focusing. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, so these are the mandatory, and again, if I busted this out into a major diagram, you'd see all the different components of these.
Right, but these encompass, it's, I'm sorry, let me throw a word. These seven encompass what I saw earlier. Those three plus the slides with the highlights, you're saying this is it right here, right?
Until we talk about the community stuff, yes, because as Gretchen pointed out, short-term rentals right now is really just a Packwood conversation, but when we get to the community, you're going to see that pop up again. And then also the focusing of development near I-5 pops up again in the community conversations. So this is just, this is just state mandate, and this is just your guys' one session on joint priorities.
I think as long as the Packwood, although it is, it is interesting, right? That short-term rental thing, it affects us all. It might be one, it seems funny, isn't it? It needs to be as important as these, even though it seems like it's not. And the I-5, if we're talking about that in that, this list, yes, thank you. It looks like you're hitting on all cylinders, what I've been thinking about. I like it.
Yep, and we'll talk a little bit more about community priorities because you're not seeing that yet in this list.
Okay.
Will the industrial development talks include any discussion on supporting I-5 expansion or, you know, widening?
So that, not directly related to the rezoning and development regulations of that, but tangentially, absolutely, because we'll be talking about infrastructure needs. So I'm sure it will be an identified need, even though we won't be able to address, address it specifically in here. You know, we, I think we already have policies that address it, so I don't really know what we need to do much more, but yeah, it'll, it'll end up being talked about.
I hope that there's something that we can do to, to highlight the need for I-5 expansion. So.
Yep.
Okay.
You'll see more about that again. It's so much fun how the community priorities line up with your guys'. So the next few slides are pretty fun.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Regarding the urban growth areas, are you going to circle back and talk to the folks that live there and experience this?
So the urban growth area discussion basically goes like this. The cities have to accommodate their population and housing needs, so they will do an analysis to determine if they can do that within their existing city limits and UGA. Once they've done that, they'll figure out if they need to grow their UGA, and if they do, they will decide where it's appropriate for them to grow, and that usually is based on where there aren't critical areas and aren't designated ag land. Then-
I was thinking more in terms of how effective has it been?
Yeah.
Speaking, you know, living in Winlock, it's, it's been a, a mess.
Yeah, so I'm just, let me just walk through the process. So once that is done, and the city has determined where they think it's appropriate for them to grow based, if they need to, then they bring that to the Planned Growth Committee. Planned Growth Committee is made up of the mayors of each jurisdiction and the chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and they have a discussion across the board about urban growth areas and, and how, because they affect every, every urban growth area affects everybody else's. So we have a conversation. We go through their analysis to make sure everything is there that we need to. The public is invited to participate in those if they want to. Then we come to you guys. So when the Planning Commission, or when the Planning Growth Committee makes a recommendation, it comes to you guys. We notify the property owners, and this is their place to talk about it. Because it isn't the city's decision, it's, it's your guys', it's the Board of County Commissioners. So when it comes to you guys, when we, when we're, when we're at that point, after we go through the, the other processes.
August, September?
Could be before that. We'll see. We'll see. So then after, so-
Can the, can the people that live there bring their pitchforks?
No, they cannot bring weapons into the house. But they get to come and they get to talk to you guys at a hearing, and so we notify them. They come and talk to you guys at a hearing. You guys will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Board of County Commissioners will have another hearing where the public gets to come to talk to them, and then the decision is made. So that's the process. And I do want to be very clear, we've talked about this before. And I do want to be very clear, we've talked about this before, the cities must accommodate their population growth. We must have them accommodate their population growth. So if they demonstrate that they must grow their U G A, then we must figure out where that goes. No one will be happy if the U G A is taking them in, there will always be angry people. So our job is to figure out what's the most appropriate place for the growth to go. That's the way it works. Because the state mandates that we accommodate population growth, period. Okay, next one. So let's talk about community priorities.
Hey, Mindy, this is Bob.
Yeah.
I've got a question on that. Clarify that statement. You and I talk, and we've talked in this group about U G A's get picked by landowners who are willing to bring stuff in the U G A's that we're not big enough. I'm talking out of turn now. Go from here and explain to me what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about. Historically, in Lewis County and many counties, the way U G A's have been expanded is the, is a property owner wants to be in the U G A and they go to the city and they say, I want to be in the U G A. And historically, counties have said, okay, that actually is not legal. It is actually, you actually need to demonstrate that you need the urban growth area, that you need to grow. Because the Growth Management Act is intended to keep cities compact. That's the point, is to not grow unless you absolutely need to. So while I say we have to accommodate population once we've allocated it, we do. But it's designed to actually keep it tight. So what the cities should be doing and what you guys in the Board of County Commissioners need to demand is that analysis. You need to say, we need to see that you cannot accommodate the population and housing inside your current city limits and your current U G A before we do an expansion. Right? So the past two years, I've been pushing really hard on this. And that round that came to you guys two years ago, I think was one of the first times that we really demanded that analysis. We said, we need to see this. It can't just be that property owner wants in. So the U G A expansions that we did end up doing, because there were a couple that were polled because the analysis didn't show that way, ended up being ones where it was demonstrated need, right? And even with that, we actually ended up recommending not to do one. So as you guys remember. So, so yes, you're, you're right, Bob. The process has not been done correctly in the past and we're really trying to rectify that.
Mindy, can I ask you a clarifying question on that? Is we talked about there needs to be a need for it to come in, that makes sense. But then you and I have said, or maybe it's been with this group, I don't remember. We, we've said, yeah, but I don't want it to go that direction. I don't, you know, the landowner wants it and happens to meet the needs of what we need. But I want to go up on the hill. And the conversation comes back to well, in small towns, we decide to go that way because it meets what the landowner wants rather than go up the hill, which is gonna cost, you know, ten million dollars or five million dollars to get a road up there, but then all life gets good. My question is, keep saying what you're saying. I didn't hear you say about that last thing about why don't we do what is is it because we don't have the money? I don't know. Talk to me more.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I can, yeah, I can keep going. So there's the demonstrated need, right? So before you even talk about growing your U G A, you got to prove you need to. Once you prove that you need to, then the question is where? And the law, in the state law says you need to avoid critical areas, right? Like you can't bring in the floodplain, except under really specific circumstances. So you got to avoid your floodplain. You have to demonstrate that over twenty years, you will be able to provide urban services. So you need to demonstrate and this, the last round that we did, we made them demonstrate it. We need you to show us that your sewer plan, your water plan, your transportation, your stormwater, you are planning to serve it. So one of the ones that came in that we never forwarded to you guys last year was an expansion where there was no demonstration that you could serve this thing. Like, it's like, I don't know how you're getting water and sewer through two wetlands, as I was looking at. Or road for that matter. So you have to demonstrate that you can serve it. So in those conversations, certain areas where the property owner may want to come in, we're not gonna be able to serve it, or it's too expensive to serve it, or you know, whatever reasons exist there. So there's an opportunity to have all those conversations as we go through, as we go through. But ultimately, the city has to serve it, so we need them on board.
Well, I guess I'm naive, I must be naive. Mindy, because when we were presented and I'm, I'm not, I just want to learn, I want to get better. When we were presented these U G A's last year that included areas that I would probably as a wetland scientist say, maybe there's better places. I guess I was sort of under the impression I needed to go with, you know, that landowner wants to do it and this person uh, and we need to have it done and therefore we could do it. But if you told me, which I think you just did, that I could say, you know, I don't like your U G A. I want you to tell me why, or tell me how much it's gonna cost me to cut that road to the top of the hill and get out of the valley. Can I do that? Are you saying I can do that?
You can. You can absolutely ask the question about what others, what other properties have been reviewed? Is this the best location? Is there a place that can better be served? That can better accommodate the growth? There's no reason why the planning commission, the Board of County Commissioners shouldn't be asking those questions.
Bob, you kind of have, correct me if I'm wrong, Mindy, but you, you've got a two pronged thing. You've got to be able to get the services there in twenty years. And you've got to kind of be able to predict that the landowner is willing to sell the property and develop it once they get the services or thereabouts. If it's somebody that's got a dairy and wants to pass it to their kids and have a dairy for the next fifty years, what's the use of bringing the sewer there?
Yeah, no, there's a ton of questions. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a, I'm gonna put a stick, a little pin in this so that, because we're gonna have U G A requests this year, so we can dive deeper into this conversation later. And I want to get back to like the big level stuff because we're super in the weeds, but that's, it's okay.
I think though, Mindy, thank you. I totally agree. Let's, let's dump it for now. Let me just say, based on what I know now, a year later, I got a lot harder questions for some things that I said yes to last year. That's all I'm saying. Let's move on.
Absolutely. And I want to encourage all of you guys on the U G A expansion conversations to ask the tough questions. We've not done it right in this county for a long time and we must change that. We're putting ourselves.
A lot of tough questions when you get a chance.
Yeah, good. We need to make sure that we, because if there's a, if there's an appeal, the county has to defend the U G A decision, not the city. So it is, it is incumbent on us to make sure that when we are agreeing to change a U G A boundary, that we feel it is legally defensible. And the fact that a property owner wants in is not a legally defensible reason to expand your U G A. So we need to, we need to be harsh. So I, I welcome your questions and I also always welcome you guys if you want to run questions by me ahead of time and make sure they're within the purview of what we can push on. Ask me ahead of time. Okay, let's talk about community, we're out of the weeds. Bring yourself back up. Okay, we'll go back to community priorities. So so really a comprehensive.
And, Mindy, come out of the weeds and I gotta take a breath. I gotta take a big breath.
Good.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay, the, okay, so a comprehensive plan, actually, it's, it's supposed to be bottom up. It's supposed to be the community who's helping us decide the future of, of Lewis County, right? Unfortunately, over the years, it's, it's really pancakes where we've got a whole bunch more specific state top down stuff that we have to deal with. That's really unfortunate. It removes a lot of our ability to do bottom up planning. But we're gonna do as much as we can. So we're gonna do as much as we can. Okay. We held, we actually held five meetings, but we didn't have anybody at the first one, which is totally my fault. I accept responsibility. I didn't do enough advertising for that particular one. But we did have four more and they were well attended. Sporadic, but well attended, as you can see, twelve to thirty seven, depending on where we were in the community. But we had excellent conversations at each of these meetings and the meeting minutes are on the same webpage as the staff report from September and all that stuff. I really encourage everybody, read the meeting minutes. There's nuance and detail in there that I think is important and I couldn't capture in a high level staff report that I sent to you guys. So please go back through and read those. Pictures, we didn't get pictures at all, at all of them, but I love pictures of the people doing the work. So this is Salcombe in the upper left, Mineral in the upper right, South County in the lower photo. I don't think we have any members of the public joining us tonight, but it was just, it was just fun having everybody there, really great conversations, great brainstorming. Everybody was engaged. So I'm really, I'm just really thrilled at this first round of engagement. Okay, so here are the high level community priorities. Again, please read the notes from each meeting. They're detailed and useful. But I'm gonna go through these and what I want, and I'm gonna tell you more about each one. And what I hope you're gonna hear is they line up beautifully with your priorities. And many of them line up beautifully with state mandates, which is excellent. It really helps us in that way. So, okay, maintain rural character. This was by far and away the highest priority. Shouldn't surprise anybody. Maintaining rural character is very important. Guess what? That's what the Growth Management Act tells us to do anyway. We're literally mandated to maintain rural character. So that's great. Specific. Encourage commercial development that is right sized for rural areas. Protect our resource lands, grow our resource based economy, that's forestry, farm and tourism. Encourage large scale commercial and industrial development to be near I five. So that's the summary of what that maintain rural character meant to people out in the community. Okay, the next one. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through the details in each of these and pause in weird ways. I apologize. Increase affordable housing options. Support development of diversity of housing types. Consider options to reduce property tax burden and regulate short term rentals. So in general, that's what this meant to people in the community in our conversations. Expand infrastructure and services. Ensure that infrastructure, roads, water, electricity, cellular internet, et cetera, and services, police, fire, EMS, school, continued, are expanded coincident with development. That's a mandate already in G M A. We have to do that. So we have more conversations with that. Transportation. Restore public transit options to East Lewis County. Work with the federal government to reduce congestion in I five. Those were the overarching comments related to transportation. Government efficiencies. Continue process improvements related to permitting, increase code enforcement, particularly related to yards with many dilapidated junk cars and trash. Heard this a lot out there. So those were the big five priorities and a little bit of the detail. Any questions from you guys about the community's priorities?
Corbin and Jason have joined us, so I wanted to give them a chance to, to speak up if they had anything, any questions for Mindy? Corbin, do you have anything?
No questions at this time, very extensive list.
Thank you. Jason? Okay, all right, he's good. Okay, go ahead, Mindy.
Yeah, so what we're gonna be doing is working on ways to get the community's priorities represented well in our scope of work, right? So we just finished up this and we're updating our scope of work. So we want to be able to represent as much as we can of this in the work that we are doing. A lot of it aligns beautifully with stuff that we have to do or, or things that you, we had already prioritized. So that's really great. So I don't think it'll be too hard actually to hit on most of the things that people find to be high priorities. So more to come on those. Okay. Let me go to the next. So next steps. Back to our big old calendar. So again, the next thing you're gonna get is the public engagement plan itself, and this is gonna talk more about how we're going to engage going forward. We just started. Those four meetings are just the very, very beginning and that was just high level scoping conversations with the, with the community. The plan's gonna outline all that stuff to come, to come, and we're gonna want your feedback on that. So if you guys have thoughts about public engagement, after that, we're gonna dive deep, deep, deep into weeds. We're gonna have that land capacity analysis, housing needs assessment. This is super techie work. Really boring reading unless you love to nerd out on technical documents. So I love it. I find it to be great, but I know it's awfully boring for a lot of people. And then we will be diving into the U G A conversation. So next week, we'll start talking with cities about that and hopefully I'll be able to give you some more timelines as we move forward, but I don't, I don't know that yet. I don't want to sugarcoat this. This is a massive amount of work. Massive amount of work. Next slide. So I need your guys' commitment. In order for this to go well, there is going to be a huge amount of reading and a lot of it's gonna be really technical and I really need you guys to read the materials ahead of time. I would like you to please write down your questions and send them to me ahead of time. This will help us craft our presentation. If I know what you guys want me to, to talk about specifically, what is confusing in this, what do you need more information about? I'll be able to take an ugly land capacity analysis and focus on what you guys are needing more information on. So get me your questions ahead of time if you can. When you come to the meetings, please be thoughtful about your comments. So as much as you can, try to formulate stuff before, be prepared when you come here, not just to wing it with, with stuff, but try to be like, I'm worried about this because of this, right? I need more information about this. As much as you can do to be really thoughtful in those comments. Because we're gonna be trying to respond to those in a really tight timeframe, right? So the, the more we can hone it, the best it will be for everybody. And then call me. I can't stress this enough, call me. If you.
Can we send you emails?
You can. I prefer call because every email is a public record that we have to hold on to. And so if we call and we talk about something, then it is, it's less public record. But I would say if you have specific questions, like you want to just send me a list of these are the questions I need you to answer, just email me those questions.
You know, Jeff.
You didn't go ahead?
I'm sorry, this is Bob. Can I jump in? I wanted to share with Jeff. Have you called Mindy before, Jeff?
Yes, just for scheduling purposes.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, here's what happens to me. I find that call really, for me, because I'm cutting her off like I do here and I just get a lot out of that call. So if, if I got something that's really on my mind that I don't, I just call her. She's really good about that and I just wanted to put that plug out.
Bob and I do some rounds on the phone.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, that's where it happens. That's really, it's comfortable place actually for that to happen.
It is.
Bob?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. And I just have a preference for, you know, organizing my thoughts and writing them down and sending them off.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I get it.
Yeah, and I don't want to tell you that you can't do that. Absolutely. If it's easier for you to write down your questions, then Lori sends me written questions often, which is perfectly fine. I just always want to caution, especially if like in Bob's circumstance, oftentimes he calls me and he says, I've been thinking about this thing and I just want to talk with you about. And that's, I'm really, really happy to just talk through stuff. So please call me. Or if you're better in person, I love coffee. We'll get coffee. Any questions about what's coming up? Before we just dive into the deep end of everything in the next few meetings?
Yeah, I did have one more thing on this. Read everything we send you. I've been, you know, and I, you've heard me sing her praises because we know it's coming and I don't miss meetings and all that. But if I get told to read something on a Tuesday and I don't get to it and it gets buried, I gotta figure out a way. I gotta, Megan, put your brain in. Like every time I'm supposed to read something, can I get the whole list of what I was supposed to read, some link to it? And then maybe that one moment, I'll remember to get all six of them read. And then maybe that one moment, I'll remember to get all six of them read, but whatever you could do to help me, because otherwise I lose you, and then all of a sudden I didn't read it. Well, crap, it's because I, I'm sorry, I lost it in a week. Thank you.
Yeah, so we will send materials to you. It's almost a full two weeks in advance, right? So like this Friday, you'll receive the materials that are for the next planning commission meeting, and that's how we always back them up. So you guys should have ten days to um review the materials. I, I'm somebody who hates to get things last minute and then try to cram the reading in. You know, right before the meeting. So we try really hard to get you guys things ahead of time so you can read through them. And those will include the attachment of materials that uh we expect that you will peruse before the meeting, so. That's our typical approach. And then a reminder for the day of.
Yeah, what I can do is I do send a reminder the day of, and I actually at that time will have all of the documents posted online as well. So I'll try to remind, remember to include a link to our online webpage, so then you have all the Zoom information as well as all the documents we're gonna be reviewing in case you forgot or haven't gotten to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions of me? All right, that's it for tonight. Easy. We're not in the deep yet.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Mindy. Are there any items from staff for the good of the order?
Um, there is. I did want to talk with you about a few legislative things. Um, let me pull up really quick, just a second. To pull up this, the bill status report, so I just don't forget which ones I was gonna talk to you about. Um, the main one that I've been working on is sixty-one forty. So this is a lammert bill that um I shopped around almost for the past year, since the last legislative session. So if you remember, two legislative sessions ago, there was um the lammert, the lammert language was changed in a good way, where it allowed us to change uses within, within lammerts. Which before that wasn't clear, but then it restricted retail and restaurant space to um five thousand square feet or twenty-five hundred square feet. And that is extremely small, right? Our local rural grocery stores usually run around eleven thousand square feet, so that would preclude grocery store in some of our lammerts where there isn't one right now. So I started shopping around, um, which became sixty-one forty, which is a change to the lammert bill, and it uh passed the Senate unanimously, and it has House a committee on Friday at ten-thirty. I'll be testifying there, so we're hoping to get it through that for floor vote, which is great. I'm excited that it have, has legs and future-wise is not fighting it, which is amazing. So anyway, that one's. Okay, let me look through really quick. There's a wooey, the Wired Land Urban Interface fix that I think is gonna get through. So this had to do with the mapping stuff. It's a little wonky, but this will impact um what we do underneath of our Hazard Mitigation Plan, Climate Action Plan. It's a fix. Super supportive of it. Glad that's gonna get through.
What was that bill number?
Um, let me find the wooey one.
You know, keeping track of all these bills is
Insane.
An amazingly busy thing to do. It just like takes so much time.
It is, it is crazy.
I've been trying to follow broadband bills and it's just pulling my hair out.
I'm trying to find the wooey bill. We'll come, it'll, I'll find it. Um, as I go through. Um, detached ADUs are probably not, again, not gonna get passed, so as you know, every year we try to pass allowing detached ADUs in rural areas. Lewis County allows them anyway. Many counties already allow them, but it's not allowed underneath Growth Management, so new jurisdictions that are trying to allow it keep getting hit with lawsuits and, and losing their lawsuits. We just never got a lawsuit, along with a number over the county, so we keep trying to pass a detached ADU allowance, and it just keeps getting not passed. Don't think it'll pass this time again. We'll keep trying. Going through the bills here. Residential, what's that?
Mindy, what am I missing? I see detached ADUs everywhere. Are they in cities only, and they're not? Why are you saying the state needs to pass something? Seems like I see them.
So in rural, in rural areas outside of UGAs, many counties, us included, allow ADUs, and we don't care if they're attached or detached. Doesn't matter. Nobody appealed our law when we passed it, so it's a law. Recently, new counties that are trying to pass rules to allow detached ADUs are getting slapped with appeals, and they're losing.
In rural areas, but they're probably happening in Gig Harbor and.
Yep, in rural areas, they're, they're losing the battle on detached. So, so WASC has been, and the counties have been trying to change the state law so that everyone can have detached ADUs. Not just places like Lewis County that just didn't get appealed, so good.
Look at this. We want four little nine-hundred-square-foot units.
We do.
Hell, we want more than just detached ADUs.
We like, we like to push the envelope.
We're cutting edge. I like it.
So um, because we have allowed detached ADUs in the past, and it has not been challenged, is that some kind of precedent that other counties can use to, you know, to bolster their individual case? Okay, so, so it has to go through the state.
Um, the wooey fix is in gross Senate bill, so ESB sixty-one twenty.
Thank you.
Um, I'm trying to see if there's anything else I need to give you guys. Any other things that you guys should know about? I don't think so. I think those were the major ones. We should know, I believe, tomorrow, tomorrow's like a major cutoff day, and then nothing else really will change, and we should know what, what's gonna continue.
Has the cap on rent continued to go forward?
I don't know. Because it doesn't affect us, so I'm not paying attention.
They're trying to put a cap on what you could, how much you can raise your rent. Is it just, is it not for Lewis County?
It'll apply to cities.
Oh, just cities.
And probably cities over a certain size. I don't even know if it'll impact. I'd have to ask Centrelia, Centrelia if it would impact that. I'm not, I'm not sure if they cross the, the population. Yeah. Just because there's so many bills, I really only focus on the ones that impact us. There's just too much to track.
This might. Um, I was testifying on a broadband bill a couple of weeks ago, and um the same day they were having a hearing on uh, changing the county structure to allow for a per-mile density, which is currently at a hundred people per square mile or something like that in average density, and they want to uh create a new type of county below rural, which would be about a fifty per square mile population density and call it what was that term? Frontier County, a designation. So, and I think that that's primarily for grant purposes, but um that could have ramifications for us that, you know, I may not be aware of, and I just wanted to mention that in case you hadn't heard that yet.
Um, no, it's not. It isn't something that has come up on WASC's list, which either means it's dead on arrival, and there's no reason to talk about it, or WASC has nothing, like literally neutral, nothing to say on it, but I can ask Paul Jewell if it's something that we need to pay attention to.
Okay, it was, um, it was one of the northeastern counties. Is it, uh, Omet? That county, Omet County, I think it is what it's called, or the, you know, that, that particular area of the state. They were the ones pushing it. But I think Wakayakam and Lewis would also probably fall under that as well. So, you know, we would go from being called a rural county to a frontier county.
I, I have no idea what that would mean.
If, if it would pass.
Yeah. My suspicion is, is it's not on Paul's list because it's just dead on arrival. No reason to talk about it. But I can ask him.
You can scratch it from the record if you want.
I know, it's okay. No, it's, it's, no, it's perfectly fine. Um, have it in the record. Paul usually does a really good job of keeping the list to things that we need to focus on and potentially testify on and um you know, make sure we get our words in there when we need to, so. That's it for me.
Okay, great. Are there any items from the planning commissioners for good of the order? Jeff? Okay, Lori? Okay, go down the list here. Um, Bob, I'm gonna call on you last. Gretchen? Okay, she's shaking her head. No, Corbin?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Sounds like somebody in the background did. Okay, Jason? Okay, I don't hear anything from Jason. All right, go ahead, Bob.
I'll just make it quick. I appreciate the field and all the softballs, Mindy. Uh, well done, well-prepared. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Bob. Okay, the next planning commission meeting will be February twenty-seventh, and the agenda items will be a public hearing on the rural housing alternative. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting that you wish to share?
Um, if we have the public engagement draft ready, I'll probably go ahead and bring that as well. To introduce it to you guys. Just, I, anytime we have something available, I'm gonna start bringing it forward to everybody, so you have chances to review things. So we'll see. We'll see if we, if we get that ready or not.
Okay, so the next meeting will be a public meeting for rural alternative?
It will be a hearing, yes.
Public.
Yes, well, all of the meetings are, are public, and that one will be a hearing, yeah.
The folks can speak out.
Yes, it's already been noticed in the newspaper um, and put up on our um planning commission page, and um the information is posted already for it, so, yep.
So uh, in every meeting, the public has a chance to speak during public comment, and um when we have a public hearing scheduled like we do for next meeting, there'll still be a time for public comment, which is different than public testimony. So there'll be two opportunities for people to speak if they want to, but there's two different purposes for those two different types of comment periods.
Yeah, so we absolutely encourage people, one hundred percent, please, please testify. You can do written testimony right now. You can come and provide public, you know, oral testimony at the meeting. We encourage comments as well, so absolutely, we would really like to hear from people.
Okay, uh, I've just been notified that Commissioner Foster would like to say something. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, everyone. I was originally going to do this on the twenty-seventh after our meeting then, but as Mindy just reminded me, that is a public hearing. So I wanted to share with everyone today in this kind of setting with, when it's more of just us, that looking at all of the work that Mindy and staff just went over for us, the calendar that we have up ahead for the next year, two years. Uh, we are expecting another baby, and I am finding myself not as able to stay on top of the material and the work as much as I would like, as much as the work deserves. So I've already spoken with Mindy, I've spoken with uh Commissioner Corbin, the other Commissioner Corbin, um, and I have tendered my resignation from the board. Tendered my resignation from the board uh effective um February twenty-ninth, I believe, or March first, um, the end of the month, basically. I wanted to be able to vote on the rural uh housing initiative work that we've been doing so much on, and clear the way for somebody else to step in who can dedicate a much more substantial amount of time than I've been able to. So there's a lot of work ahead. You all are doing a fantastic job. I think this is gonna be a really exciting year. Uh, next year, year and a half, very exciting. Uh, excited to watch, see what you all come up with, but I think it's important for me to carve out space for somebody else to pour more time and energy into it than I can. So appreciate you, uh, you all. It's been a great learning experience, dream come true in some ways, and look forward to hearing more of what you all accomplish.
Commissioner Foster, you will be missed, and um, but it will result in probably a little bit less confusion.
Yes.
Be called Jim. We, we will miss you.
Yeah.
Can I, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Go ahead, Mindy. Okay.
I, I totally get how busy you are, totally get how busy you are. I really appreciate you sticking around for that vote on the twenty-seventh, because I won't be there. And that's an important vote, and I appreciate you being there for that, and I look forward to bumping into you.
Definitely.
We'll see you get in down the road doing something.
Yeah.
Definitely. Sure, our paths will cross again.
Yeah, so I, I agree. Um, it's been nice having you on the commission. I understand one hundred percent. Meaning to make choices and priorities. I totally get it. Um, I did want to let everyone know that the um recruitment for the position has already gone out. It went out yesterday at like four-thirty from the Board of County Commissioners. It's a three-week opening. Commissioner Foster's position is at-large, so anyone from the county can apply for it. They do that through the Board of County Commissioners page, so there's an application there that people can submit to apply, so I just want to make sure. If you guys know anybody who desperately wants to join us for this crazy ride of the comprehensive plan periodic update, please invite them to apply. We'd like to get um, you know, another dedicated person on, on board, because this is just critical work that we are doing right now, so. Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner Foster.
Okay, any of the other commissioners unable to attend the next meeting? Okay, seeing not, seeing no one, sounds like we should have a full house then. Okay, all right. That's about it. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Corbin, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, this Bob, that's a motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, how about that?
All right, we'll take the motion from Bob since he was first. All right.
Oh, excuse me. That's all right. Corbin, see you soon. Bye-bye.